I want to call this meeting to order at 2:05. If we have no call fees for telephonic reports.
Trusty Garrett.
Yes.
Trusty Hinton.
Here.
Trusty Beg. Trusty Nicola. Trusty Davis.
Here.
Vice President Aguillache. And President Richard.
Yes, thank you.
Court was established.
Do we have any statements of conflict that are being done? We move on. Do we have any public comments? Anybody in the back who want to talk? No got anything to say? Okay. Ma'am, stenographer, would you please announce the closed session?
I'd be happy to. The board in closed session will address item 2.1, discipline, dismissal, release and complaint. Item 2.2, conference labor negotiators. Agency negotiator Trevor Stewart and Catherine Pritchard. Employee organization CSEA. Item 2.3, conference with labor negotiators. Agency negotiator Rex Randall Erickson. Employee organization YFA. Item 2.4, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation. Name of case John Martin et al. Versus Board of Governors of the California Community Colleges et al. Item 2.5, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation. Name of case title nine complaint. Complaintant one. And item 2.6, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation. Name of case title nine complaint. Complaintant two. Last item in closed session. Item 2.7, public employee performance evaluation. Title chancellor. Step one, March board meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn to closed session.
Sorry, we're a little bit late. We had a very nice dinner prepared by the students up here, so it was worth the wait. So could we start off with the Pledge of Allegiance? Can I get trustee Davis to lead us? Madam Sonographer, could we have roll call please?
For the record, the student trustee position is still vacant. Trustee Beggs, trustee Davis, trustee Garrett, trustee Hinton is making her way. Trustee Nicolau.
Here.
Vice President Aguilar. And President Richards.
Here, thank you.
Forum is established.
Okay, we'll move on to state in a conflict. I think trustee Nicolau will have one coming up.
I'll be stepping out at seven point eight.
Thank you.
I will be stepping out at seven point eight.
Come on in, we got plenty of room. It's nice to see so many people here. There's some chairs up here in the front. Come on, don't be shy. Kind of need like a church usher, right? To say, here you go. Okay, do we have, at this time, I'd like to ask for a public comment regarding any of the closed session items. We have no report from closed session, but do we have any public comments?
There are. I think we're getting the sheets for public comments, so if you give me one moment.
If there were any kind of closed session, we can say. Yes. Do I have any changes?
I was informed that there were going to be some public comments possibly, but I don't see any there, so.
Okay, yeah, and I actually was looking at the wrong sheets. Not that I would ever make a mistake of unengaging, but I kind of did. There you go. Do we have any changes in order of business? Can I get the motion to approve the minutes from last meeting? Motion by trustee Davis, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Then we have to get approval of the minutes of the February fourteenth. So moves by trustee Garrett, second. Trustee Aguilar, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I will abstain from that, those minutes, since I wasn't present.
Okay, very good. Okay, at this time, we're up to three point nine.
You got an approval from trustee Hinton.
Thank you very much. I now open the floor for public comment. Do we have cards or do we, people are just going to come up? How do we do it? I see there's, I see there's a lot of people here, so I suspect you all have a lot to say. Is it limited to three minutes or five minutes?
Four.
Four minutes. Please, at this time, anything that you want to come up and talk about, unless it's on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, then we have to come at that time. But I'll open the floor to public comment. Anytime.
We have the Jody Miller or McNair, pardon me. McNair wanting to make a public comment. You can go ahead and come to the podium.
Don't be shy, you're among friends.
If you wanted to speak right now is the time.
I'd like to hear from you.
I'm Jody McNair. I'm a forestry student and I just would like to state that I noticed that the program has been really, really trying and yeah, I'm supposed to graduate next fall and I'm just a little sad about how this, how my ending of college is turning out. But I'm just glad everybody's trying and I really like the teachers that are helping up, helping out and supporting and standing up. Yeah. Thank you for listening, everybody.
My apologies with the name Ben. That's my best.
Please, welcome.
Good evening. President Richards, trustees, Chancellor Young, James Beck, and Gella. I am a former graduate of Forestry Natural Resources Program and a birth student. I'm here today because there's been a lot of frustration that was long presumed was going to be concluded in this meeting. We, up to about a month ago, we were notified that the process is going to be student body, as you have heard from our program, is going to be frustrated and not given a lot of answers. I think in the future, regular meetings, you would expect to hear more comment in that body. Take in their individual experiences. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, Kathy Marcus.
Hello, I am a past student of Forestry Natural Resources, Water Resource Management. I have a degree in all three. I have to thank Tom Hofstra, Crystal and Laura. I couldn't have done it without them. I was on disability for thirty years. And now I'm a proud worker at the U.S. Forest Service. And I work very closely with the forestry department. They come out, they do programs out there. We like to show that the ways that they can progress from where we started here to where we are now. There's a lot of our graduates that work for us. And I just want to say, the way that I see the program going right now is a little disappointing. And I would like to see our strong leaders come back. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anne Slait.
Hi, good evening, Board of Trustees. Totally was not expecting to talk in front of all these people, so it's gonna be fun, but I came prepared. So my name is Anne Slait. I'm a current Columbia College student, attending the Forestry Natural Resources Program. And I have been attending this college for five years, so long time coming, fun times. But during my time here, I have seen the dedication and commitment and the tenacity that Tom Hofstra and Tom, Ty McCarthy have put into this program and the lengths that they have gone to make an impact in students' lives, educations and career. Every student I have countered, including myself, in this program. Every student I have countered, including myself, in this program, and even faculty since 2019, have attributed Tom and Ty as current and former, oh, Tom and Ty, as well as current and former FNR instructors, to the highlight of their time at Columbia College. But their absence from campus and the program has been very deafening for a lot of us current students, and has created a lot more stress and uncertainty for the program as a whole. But I would like to note the new and returning instructors and student workers who have risen to the occasion of keeping the FNR program alive and well, are doing a phenomenal job in ensuring that students are still attending courses and they're getting their required education done, and without them, this program would be currently lost at this time. But the lack in communication and discourse from the board has been extremely disappointing, and I do believe that we, as students, are entitled to some form of update or explanation as to where the board or district stands on the investigation. I know it probably goes a lot deeper than our understanding, but and I know you guys probably have been working very hard on this, but the fact that this whole investigation has lasted this far into the spring semester without really any sort of word as to what is going on to the students has caused a lot of confusion, and these is all puzzled as to where as to what the future holds. Students who are in the FNR program and are graduating this year are anticipating the return of our beloved instructors to be present and send them off to a better future at graduation, and I hope they are there. Me personally, I won't be graduating until spring of next year, but I hope to see instructors that me and many other people have grown to cherish and benefit from their knowledge for the last five years, to be present as well. And I know I can speak a lot for, speak for a lot of students when I say that we want our teachers back, and for all of us nonsense to end, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Ruby Mason. Mesa.
Why, I've heard do it, because I'd probably butcher the name, so I just.
Hi, my name is Ruby Mason. I am a student worker here at Columbia College, and I have been here for the last four years. And of those four years, I have worked very closely with Tom Hofstra and Ty McCarthy in the Forestry and Natural Resources Program. Over those times, I have seen them change lives. Like, there's no other way to say that. The impact that they have on their students, these people are stopping people from dropping out of school, making them feel like they've actually got self-worth for once. And I think we all know, we can all think of at least one or two teachers in our lives that made us think we're decent people, that we actually have a chance out there in this world. And it sounds so simple, but that's tough out here in this world, and as a hands-on person and in a hands-on, like, job, it's hard to have someone out there, especially male, as a female, it's like, no, you are equivalent to those men out there, and you can get those jobs. You are just as strong, and you have just as many opportunities out there. Tom and Ty have impacted countless peoples, countless peoples. Go, like, we've got Kathy McCarthy, she spoke out here, and Ben Kikugawa. Those guys are so influential in their jobs that they have a lot to do with Tom and Ty. I think most of our students are struggling with them not being here. We have got great staff that are filling in at the moment, but we have been silenced, and I know there's not a lot we can talk about due to the situation, but we need more. We need to have someone step up showing that they're caring for our community and that they're caring for our forestry program. This program has twenty years of experience behind it built up with Tom, and countless more with Ross Kirkie in there, and Laura and Crystal, and we're all struggling. I see that my instructors are struggling. My new ones are struggling because they're just not getting the support that they fully need, and they're coming into a classroom with, the students are upset. The students are very upset. There's, there's some hostile stuff. And it's not bad, but it's just passionate students. Like Anne touched on graduation, some of us have been working, and like, I personally didn't drop out of college. I was so close to dropping out of college until Tom introduced me to the outside world and all of the opportunities I can have out there. And whether or not we're going to have them here at graduation, that's going to be very impactful for a lot of students. So it's just the eyes and ears of Columbia, not only with the faculty that I talked to, because I talk to everyone. You can ask a lot of people in this room. I'm definitely that person that's like, what's this? What are we doing? Let's get a game plan. And I'm, I'm really tired of seeing my students and my staff struggle with no answers and like, no support from above. And I think something really needs to be done about this, because it's gone on too long. They left in October with no, with nothing. They were gone in the middle of the day, and we heard they were supposed to be back in December, and still nothing. We heard they were supposed to be back in March, still nothing. We don't know if they're going to be back in the summer, and we don't even know if they're going to be back in the fall. And there's, we're frustrated. We need answers. And I think that's where I'm going to say thank you at this point.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
I don't, I don't have any other sheets.
Is there anyone else that maybe didn't turn in a card that wishes to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and get back to our agenda. I'm going to start off with the board committee reports. Trustee Garrett, Finance Committee. Policy Committee Report, trustee Hinton.
Later on in the meeting of our absence dates.
Very good. Master Junior College Foundation Report, trustee Beggs.
No, I'm still waiting to find out when we
Okay. Okay, now we'll go to Columbia.
We don't have a date for that, yeah, right.
Columbia College Foundation Report, trustee Davis.
Tonight, we will hear a report from the Columbia College Foundation, so postpone that till then.
And that was such a moving report. We'll have you go back on to the Stanislas County.
Well, actually, on February twenty seventh, I attended the Association Board Workshop held at the Stanislas County Office of Education, and, and it was geared towards K-12 and expulsions and suspensions and the like, but there was also a segment on the budget and what will happen with Prop ninety-eight when it's all said and done, and we're all advised to watch that closely to see how the governor and his team and the legislature, how they protect that funding for Prop ninety-eight. So keep your eyes peeled on that, but that was a fun workshop.
Thank you. Trustee Hinton, anything report about the Valley Insurance Program, like Powers Agency?
If I may, if I may, real quick, the trustees, since we're live streaming, we need the mic on and closer. Yeah, so you'll hear a little echo of yourself.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to have a yearly meeting in Monterey in May, but right now I have no reports. Okay, with that, we'll move on, and we're very happy to give the floor to Columbia College to talk about your foundation.
Good evening, everyone. We're very happy to be here for the Columbia College Foundation. My name is Amy Nelson. I'm the Director of Development for Columbia, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Columbia College Foundation. And I'm here with our board president, Charles Sagerstrom, who is just a fantastic partner, and we're going to tag team on our presentation, so thanks for your indulgence with that. Our nonprofit foundation started in nineteen seventy-two, just four years after the college started, and it is going very strong. It was started as a way to build community support and connections for our students, and we're very proud of the results that we're seeing. Thanks to our donors, including many of you. Our foundation is thriving. We just recently passed assets of more than six million dollars. Trevor helped us with that over many years. We're really proud for that amount for a small college like ours. It really speaks to the network of college and community partners that we've built up at the Columbia College Foundation, and you can see some of the examples there, really fantastic partnerships that we've had, and we expect more. Again, Charles, and leads our foundation, which is a group of very dedicated volunteer directors, and they are representing expertise in education, healthcare, natural resources, finance, business, nonprofit leadership, and more. Our focus, our core focus at the foundation is really focused on supporting student success, and we do this through scholarships, emergency aid to students, and projects and programs that support campus life and educational experiences for our students. Scholarships have always been the core of our work. Okay. There we go. Scholarships have always been the core of our work at the foundation from the very beginning, and our program is really thriving. We, we have more and more students applying online through our application process every year, and in twenty twenty-three, we awarded nearly three hundred thousand dollars to Columbia College students. These awards go to students in all majors, in all fields of study, and we have special support for reentry students, for first-generation students, for veterans, for foster youth, and other special groups. This is a credit to the dozens of scholarship committee members and the dozens of faculty, staff, and community members who provide references and who score our applications and who help us keep this going each cycle. I really want to thank our colleagues at Financial Aid, at the Transfer Center, at the Academic Achievement Center. Each ingredient is essential to a successful program. We're really proud of what's happening at Columbia College. Of course, we know that more needs to be done, especially with financial support for students. The jump in the cost of living has put more hurdles in the way of students, and scholarships give them direct, direct and immediate help. In that spirit, we're continuing our fiftieth anniversary offer, which is assuring that any student who's awarded a scholarship at Columbia is going to get at least one thousand dollars. That's really an exciting offer to be able to make, and we do that with the help of our donors and our scholarship partners. All of them are helping us to raise the bar for scholarships, and if you donate to the foundation, all of you, you help make that happen, so thank you. I'm going to turn the next slide over to Charles.
This is an amazing program that is why I joined the foundation eight years ago, and here's why. It's an, it's an effort between the foundation, the college, high schools, and our donors to provide two years of free tuition and fees to all our local high school graduates right after they graduate. This was done before the AB nineteen funding, and we've continued to benefit from that. To date, we have served thirteen hundred students in this program. It's been in existence for over five years, and this year, if you look around this campus, there are four hundred Promise students. And this last fall, a hundred more students arrived than the previous year. So these numbers, I think, are incredible. I'm so proud to have been part of this program. Since we started, you know, the Promise student count since twenty eighteen has gone up a hundred and sixty-three percent. You can't make up these numbers. That is an actual fact, and certainly Trevor knows a lot about that. But the support, Trevor and the Finance Office keeping us, you know, with some refilling of the coffers based on, you know, state funding. But this was started, and you may have been to the Milliwise Plaza here. It's named for them for a reason. They contributed a million dollars as an endowment to make sure this program would last forever. In addition, to get it kicked off, small donors from our little community contributed three hundred thousand dollars. So this is something that is now baked in to the high school outreach programs. The influx of energetic, goal-oriented students has had a positive impact on campus culture. I talked to a friend of mine who works, you know, runs the library, and just is very impressed with the crop of students that are coming through. You know, it's all about students, but part of it's about money, too. We have actually canned up millions of dollars from those thirteen hundred students that have floated up all over the boats here on this campus. The foundation, its staff, and the Promise Committee have been able to work closely in concert with student services, with student advising, with student support functions, and scholarships, and other connections to provide the best possible experience to this cohort of young first-time students. Numbers that mean a lot to you and maybe not to other people, persistence rates have increased fifteen percent for this cohort compared to the campus as a whole. That, to me, is a beginning of the definition of, you know, long-lasting success. We continue to be able to emphasize to our high school graduates that this place is an affordable pathway that every family can count on. That message is clear, it's consistent, it's effective, and it's persistent. Thank you. Now I'd like to talk about some of the other things that our foundation does to connect with students and other projects. Most recently, you know, we have a new program called Welcome Home. It's a program that offers campus housing to students in extreme need for safe housing. We all know about the housing crisis, and we're very proud to say that in, in concert with Financial Aid and the Basic Needs Committee, there are fourteen young people who are actually, you know, in a apartment in the student housing complex rather than living in their car or on someone's sofa. You know, they have been relieved of this unstable housing circumstance, and they will also, though, as a precursor to what we hope will happen with student housing in the future, you know, they will be able to connect to, you know, workshops on campus, events.
From the college's Title III grant. This has been an amazing opportunity, and it has secured the future of nearly a dozen scholarships at Columbia College, and we're very proud to have had donors help us to reach this goal. So that brings you up to date with the Columbia College Foundation. There's more to come. We are very excited about what we're exploring with opportunities for alumni outreach, for student mentoring, for student housing, and more. And finally, it's my job, so I'm going to add, please consider becoming a foundation donor yourself. It's easy, it's fast, and every dollar goes to our students and helps students win. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone from the public like to comment on the presentation? Questions from the board?
Oh, green button on. Okay, here we go. Repeat myself. This is amazing.
This is amazing. The work that you guys have done to put money back into your community, the Columbia College community and for the high school students that are just looking for an opportunity to succeed, attain their higher education goals. I think it's just amazing what you guys are doing and continue to do for the community, for local businesses and to give all of these students a chance at success. So, thank you very much. We all partook in one of the programs up here tonight for our dinner. Absolutely amazing. That's, I don't know how many times now, but I say it, great. So, thank you all very much.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just like to add to Darren's comments. I have the opportunity of representing the board there at the Columbia Foundation meetings. And I just want to say that this group of people are, as you can tell, incredibly dedicated. The meetings are well-run, it's professional, agendas are set. They have action items and they're moving forward on a vision. I'm impressed every time I attend one of their meetings. Just wanted to say as a former high school principal and superintendent that the ability to tell a student, you go to Columbia. For many of them, just the idea of fees and tuition is intimidating and some believe we can't get there. I mean, to be able to tell this student, oh, you can apply for the Promise Scholarship, there is a way forward for you. The anxiety that is lifted off of them and then, hey, I can do this and I can be part of this college. And then have it extended to a second year for them is, this makes a difference in their lives, difference in their lives. So it's, I want to put that out there. Thank you again. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Well done. Looking forward to meeting with you soon.
President Tran?
Thank you. I really would like to acknowledge, you have a group of people, as trustee Davis said, but not only dedication, but I would say the spirit of being an entrepreneur. I think anytime that the college comes to the foundation and say, hey, we have this challenge or we have this opportunity, immediately the whole board come together with this entrepreneur. Okay, let's, how do we tackle this? How can we make a win-win for everybody? And truly seeing the great support with just our basketball team at the last minute, get the whole community and everybody put in. So personally, as a president, I am so grateful to have a board that I know I could go to, work together. And it's hard if you're afraid and I'm not afraid. So I do want to say thank you for that. And thank you for the board acknowledging and seeing the great work of our foundation.
And I would just like to add, as someone who spent 40 years fundraising for intercollegiate athletics and universities, I'm very impressed with what you're doing. The numbers are great. The buy-in's great. We do have a celebrity in the midst here, trustee, former trustee Margie Balkan. And she couldn't, she couldn't talk enough about the foundation. So I want to congratulate you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before we move on to the next thing, I would be remiss if I didn't make a comment about the comments about the professors. Public comment is, is a time where we really don't get to comment as to what you said, but we can answer questions. I can tell you that I was made aware of this situation today. I immediately contacted President Tran. And something you should understand, although trustees have final responsibility, there are very, there are several rules, regulations, ed code, personnel matters, and this is a personnel matter and there's a process for investigating personnel matters. I hate bureaucracy. I love transparency. It doesn't seem like that's happening, but I can tell you, we're doing everything possible to handle this thing professionally and there are legal matters involved. And I can also tell you that it's my understanding that although these, these two professors are very popular, attempts have been made to, to have your classes. And really, that's all I can tell you at this point in time. But don't think that we don't take this seriously. Don't think that it doesn't bother us. Don't think that President Tran and our HR department hasn't been working on this. But unfortunately, there are rules and regulations in government. So with that, I'd like to move on to 5.2 and that's the presentation of the Columbia College Culinary and Hospitality.
Put on my chef hat first before I go into academic senate mode. So, hi, I am Marcus Wisnatt. I have the pleasure and the honor of being a full-time faculty member, a professor now, right, of our hospitality management department. So the hospitality management department, which you got to eat down there today, right? You had my colleague Don Dickinson was down there. Awesome. So it's made up of Chef Don, Chef and myself. We are the two full-time culinary instructors. Chef Don Dickinson is actually the program coordinator. Then we have our part-time chef instructor, Chef Robert Banworth, who subs for us every now and then, but we actually have him in the Rising Scholars Program. He is one of the main teachers over at the Vallesito Fire Camp along with Chef Danny Duffy, who does the same thing. We're very excited to have Chef Tori Keever among us now. So those of you who know Tori, she runs the apprenticeship program, but she is an alumni of the program. And she actually is teaching our restaurant desserts class this, this semester. Ma, Tori, where are you? Is he here? I don't know where she's at. She's teaching culinary math and I believe she's doing nutrition as well. Awesome to see an alumni of the program become a part-time member of our team. We're very happy with that. And of course, we have the legendary Tom Bender down there, who has been pretty much with the program since it started. And we have Matt Dunn, who works for Evergreen in Rush Creek. And he teaches our culinary law classes, which is really nice. And then of course, instructional support specialist Jason Romano. Do I, what, how do I work this? The middle button here? What's that? Right-hand button? Oh, the one that was the right arrow? So pretty much our degrees and our awards, you have an associate's in culinary arts. You also can get a certificate of achievement in culinary arts as well. We push for our students to get their associates. We have just finished up pushing through curriculum. As I look at our curriculum specialist, we have an agreement, an articulation agreement with Cal State San Marcos to, or Cal State East Bay actually, to accept our students who want to go on for a four-year hospitality management degree. We're working on getting some other things pushed through as well, so we can get some other traction with the Cal, the Cal State system. So these are our degrees and awards, hospitality management, food service management. We're making a little, we're, before I, when I made this slideshow, it was kind of funny because we changed, we're trying to change one of the names up here, but you get the gist of it actually. So these are our degrees and awards. We push our students to actually go for both the associates in culinary arts and also the associates in baking and pastry arts. Baking and pastry arts are coming back. They're very popular right now. Hotels and resorts are actually hiring pastry chefs again. They went through a, there was a time where they didn't have the money to do that, but this, this industry is, is, is coming back. So my baking and pastry classes are rolling pretty nicely actually. So these are our degrees and our awards. Let's get to the fun stuff here. What do I, hold on now. I don't know if I missed something. It does. Am I? Okay. All right. So that's, that's our, that's Chef Don right there. He, this is his garmaise class and they are breaking down. It looks like that is the pig that they're breaking down. And it is going to be used for certain events that we do, goes, we roll it into other classes. And then eventually it actually gets used for the garmaise when we're doing sausages and all of that stuff. If you can just look around in the background, I don't know if anyone's actually had a tour in there yet. But everything that you see reminds you of, of a restaurant, right? It's just 100% what you would see when you went, when you go into the food service. We teach like they are in the business. Some of them are in the business. We encourage them to get jobs somewhere, get into the business. Let's go, you know, figure it out because it's not for everyone. I don't know, some of you probably, everybody has worked in a restaurant, right? So that's kind of how it is. And so it's, it's one of those things, but it's not for everyone. So we, we treat it as it is a restaurant setting.
For the record, I never had the pleasure of working in a restaurant, but.
You're, you're lucky, Dr. Richards. You really are. All right. Pickle making right here. So we're making pickles. Okay, this is part of the garmaise. I'm going to do a, yeah, sorry. It's working now? Okay, you just had the, my, my daughter told me to, she hits it, you know, that's, okay. All right. So part of the garmaise class as well, making pickles. Notice the uniforms. Okay, this is culinary standard. This is culinary 101, culinary school 101. You have the checks. If you are actually in a resort or anything like that, if you see, if you see culinary staff wearing the checks, that means they are, so the pants, the checkered pants, they are actually not management. So executive shoes, sous chefs to, to, all the way up to executives wear the black pants and everyone else wears the check. So that's kind of how, if you're in a hurry and you need to see somebody, you need to make a complaint, don't mess with the checks. You go find somebody with the black pants, right? So that's what you do. So, so kind of, that's how the kitchen rolls. Neckerchiefs, you don't see that much anymore, but why we are doing this, we are doing this so it is a uniform. You have to take it home. You have to wash it. You have to figure it out. All right. It's responsibility. I sound like my dad, but you know, he was right on a couple of things, right? So that's just kind of how it is. Sugar work. Chef Don did a really good job. We were implementing, doing sugar work. So these are decorative pieces, actually blowing sugar, you know, melting the sugar, blowing, you know, and so, and making little figurative pieces out of it. So if you look around back there, you can see our screens. We have, we can do remote out of our, out of our lab settings. We have hooked up before with Black Oak and a couple of other casinos and have worked on that. We've done that. That was a while ago and then we'll get a little bit more into that. Okay, ignore the yard sick that's in my hand. But, but that's the baking side. That's my baking class. This is probably, I think this might be this year's baking class. Industrial oven in the back, proofer for our breads, cake frames that are hanging up there. Everything that you will find in a bake shop. Out in the real world, you're going to have it in, in our kitchens. We're very proud. This is a, a great program that we have been, you know, cultivating and very proud of it. Okay. Just induction burners. Just working, which is working. Notice the uniform still, just everybody is, is in full uniform. We require this. We give them a couple of weeks to, we give them a couple of weeks to get everything in order. The goal of mine, I was just talking to, to Don about this a couple of weeks ago. And we would really like to see, we, we want to start working with the foundation. Our program is, is zero textbook cost, but there's still uniform costs. So we're trying to figure out something where they don't have to buy their uniform, where we can kind of figure that out. Shoes, the shoes, a good pair of professional chef shoes should be $150 or more. You know, you have to invest in your shoes. So we're trying to figure out some ways where we can help our students, you know, help out with those costs. And that's it. Demo table back there. I mean, it's just, we're very fortunate. That's Hannah. She's making some bread. This is part of the breads class. Big thank you to Sky who got all these pictures for me. She was downstairs, I think, filming as well. There we go. That's a good shot right there. It's a good shot of a professional bake shop right there. Doing more sugar work in the back. That's the line. That's the actual service line, espresso machine out there. So we are teaching, we're teaching what you're going to be learning in the real world. And some fun things that we do, that we've been, that we've been doing. We all know, we all know that culinary programs don't make money. You know, we don't because everything's through the roof, right? And that's, we're, we're, we're very fortunate to have the funds to do this. I'm very fortunate to teach what I love, but we got to figure out what we do with the food. So what we do is we, I get online and I say, hey, come over. And I'm sure everybody's seen that when I, when I did that email. So pop-up bakery, pop-up something. We usually, it's free for the students and then we put a little donation out there. If, if somebody wants to give the, you know, the culinary program a little, a little bit of money, but we don't waste. We don't throw anything away. We have extra. We do really well on our waste, but we also say, hey, let's get the students running through here. So free food for our students, right? And that's a good picture. Cellar Bistro, you guys were down there. Just real quick, next semester, Tuesdays and Thursdays open for lunch, Wednesday nights, Cellar Bistro. Very proud of that. That's working out really well. We're seeing our numbers come up again. So alumni, something that we want to start working on is a tracking, a tracking system for, for the alumni. Restaurant workers, kind of a different breed. They like to disappear every now and then. It's one of those things. So we are trying to figure out a tracking system for alumni. The ones that we know are around various local and regional restaurants. I, sometimes when I go into a restaurant, I kind of don't want to make eye contact with the owner or with the chef because they're just like, we need people, we need people, we need people. And the people that are working are already working and the people that just want, that don't really want to work and they're concentrating more on other things, don't, they, they're fine. We, we, everybody that, that wants a job will be able to get a job up here, excuse me. And then we're working with our hospitality management club or culinary club. We have a, a, a club on campus. I'm trying to get that rechartered, I think, but we're, we're working on that as well. So we have a good, we have a, a good future ahead of us. So the future post-COVID, hmm, I'll tell you. We, it was rough. I had one, I had one student in a class and we needed to push her through because of, you know, because of graduating. It was bad. I even thought that I was like, well, I don't know if, I don't know if I'm going to be around here much longer because of that, of, of our, just our numbers. Our numbers are really, was, were down. Our numbers have bounced back. We're pretty happy with that. And, and I see a continuing, continuing, increasing on, with the numbers of that. We have an advisory board. Every CTE department needs an advisory board. We are reworking that as well, getting some, trying to get more people that are in the area to be on this advisory board. It's hard though, because of when our meetings and we're just trying to get more restaurants and involved in that. Enrollment's back up. We're offering more course offerings and exciting class that we are, that we're offering this. Coming up this summer is a catering class. We're going to try to get that food trailer rolling to a couple of fairs and all of that good stuff. Is that it? Yeah, that's it. Real quick though, there's a couple of things that we do, that we do. We don't cater. We're not a catering company. We don't cater around here. But I have told my colleagues that if they need something, just let me know. I have though incorporated the Promise Breakfast with the foundation. We've been doing that for the last five or six years, maybe longer. How many years? Five years. I've written that, I wrote that into my curriculum. So that is a class. That is, they come and that's what they do. And also with the Child Development Tea Party, I've wrote that into my baking class as well. So we're just trying to find some ways to get hands-on experience, get some real-world experience. We have Pie Day on Thursday, so my baking class made some pies. Cram Nights coming up. And then Lisa Murphy did a bat talk about, well, three or four years ago. And we made little bat cookies and gave them, gave them out. So anyways, like I said, I, I make the joke that I'm living the dream, but I am, I, I've, I'd always wanted to be a chef and I, and I did that, but at some point in my life, I was like, I want to teach this and I got to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Trustee comments? I will tell you that I get very hungry when I see your things about the pop-ups coming up. So.
Yeah, that's what everybody says on, yeah, down the hill. They're like, oh, good pop-up. All right. Thank you very much.
Before we move on.
Congratulations to whoever made the bread. That was delicious.
Ms. Nelson, Ms. Nelson, I see a lot of people here with shirts. Could you identify the students? Are that's associate students?
All right.
So we'll get to hear from you later. Okay, thank you. Same color. I was a little confused. Okay, let's get into association reports. Alan McKissick, please.
Okay, Augrey. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I want to address two matters briefly, focus my remarks and commendations. First is about accommodations for the mobility impaired at Modesto Junior College. Today I asked my colleague Jim Solomon for his sense of how that is going. First is about accommodations for the mobility impaired at Modesto Junior College. Today I asked my colleague Jim Solomon for his sense of how they, how that is going. From the viewpoint of someone deeply involved on a topic like deeply personal for him. His assessment was glowing. He detailed an impressive list of improvements on campus, and that was just based on his personal and direct experience. But he does get around and he does look for these things. When I ask if I might convey his thanks this evening, he enthusiastically agreed immediately and asked me to mention the board as a whole. And especially those trustees who have gone above and beyond on this issue and taken a special interest. He said there were too many other people contributing to thank them individually tonight. He said it's been the work of a diverse team under some good leadership and upper administration. Secondly, and I know, uh, that President Giselle, the MJC Senate will be speaking to this, but I want to offer a couple of brief remarks. I, I want to offer commendations to our HR department, uh, Catherine Pritchard in particular, and to the academic senates for their work and updating our district faculty hiring procedures, which is referenced in Board Policy seven dash eight oh four seven staffing academic positions. Now, in terms of faculty participation and governance, this is what I call the third thing. It's not about ten plus one academic and professional matters or the collective bargaining agreement. It is, quote, that California Education Code eight seven three six zero B requires that hiring criteria, policies and procedures for new faculty members shall be developed and agreed upon jointly by representatives of the governing board and the academic senate and approved by the governing board. I had the privilege of being in uh, the first work group with districts, uh, representatives and academic senate representatives that made the first draft of this procedure. It took quite a bit of discussion, but we came up with a pretty good document. I won't say how many decades ago that was, but I've kept an eye on it. I've looked in on it and been part of efforts to revise it. And I think this latest revision is outstanding. Hence my commendations. Uh, I think everyone would agree that it's actually absolutely critical that we hire the, and cultivate and retain the best professors in pursuit of the college mission. So thank you again to everybody involved in that. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Questions for Professor McKissick? Thank you. Now we'll get into the academic senate, senate reports. Modesto, uh, Junior College President Giselle Flores.
I didn't have time to print out my report, so I'm going rogue. Good evening, everybody. Uh, it's great to see you. Um, I'd like to start my report by thanking my colleague friend and Senate, uh, partner in crime, Marcus, for the VP, VIP, uh, tour he gave us of Columbia College. Beautiful campus. I'm really excited to see all the incredible work that the faculty here do for their incredible student population. So thank you for that. It was beautiful. Um, I know there's a retirement in the child development coming up. No, I'm just kidding. I'm good in Modesto. Um, so our senate is actually really, really busy this time of the semester. I create really optimistic agendas, but we've accomplished some big things. So, uh, one of the biggest things as my colleague, uh, Alan just shared is that for, it's quite a few years coming, three senate presidents later, we have our faculty hiring document uh, that was passed for a second read. It's now in the, uh, very capable hands of our Columbia College colleagues. Um, and they will read it for their second read in about a week. So I'm excited to see where it goes. Um, and I'm hoping we can get this final draft done and moving forward. So future hires can go through this document. Uh, we also have something that was drafted by our AI committee. Um, it is an updated academic integrity statement, um, that went through for a first read in the senate. This is something faculty are talking a lot about, and so it was well received. Uh, there needs to be a whole overhaul of that statement, but for now there's just a small addition that incorporates AI usage within that statement that we're hoping. We'll also make usage of the library resources as well for students. Uh, we also have really, really capable and incredible, uh, curriculum committee co-chairs who are just so busy. Uh, when legislation happens around curriculum, they like to give things to us and then give us a hundred and eighty days to do really important huge changes. So right now we have a GE advisory committee and they're tasked with creating our local GE, uh, plans and those will go through the senate within the next month. So we're trying to decide what that local GE will look like, making sure it's, uh, very student friendly. Um, and that students are at the heart of the choices that we're making. Uh, so excited about that work. It's always, it always feels rushed, but gotta love those, that legislation that comes down to us. Um, the other thing that, uh, we're really excited about is, uh, we have, uh, quite a few different GE philosophies that are coming through that will guide our work in this GE, uh, new world that we're living in. So I think it's important that we're all uh, coming to this work with the same state of mind and really looking at what's important when we make these GE decisions. Um, I really, I'm going to put my child development hat on. You will get a personal invitation from me for our Helen Ralph event. Um, it is April 11th, the Thursday evening. Um, it'll be at six thirty PM. It is where we acknowledge and celebrate our students who are scholarship recipients, who are certificate awardees and who are graduates of our program. Um, it's a lovely event. Uh, we're really excited about it. Last year we had, we were really violating fire code, which I don't want to say that with the amazing fire program that's here, but we, uh, definitely were, were pushing up against the wall. So, um, I, I really hope to see you all there and that concludes my report.
Thank you. You wrapped it up nicely.
Thank you.
Any questions for her? Chef Wizanat?
Hi. Hello. Thank you for having me. So good evening trustees, President Richards and Chancellor Young. Um, just a couple of newsworthy notes. Uh, this is coming out of the TLC realm. They were, we were thrilled to welcome renowned author and speaker Dr. Sandra McGuire and about a hundred and forty-five students and educators at the Columbia College Teaching and Learning Summit, February 29th and March 1st. We had attendees from Columbia College, Modesto Junior College, Merced College, Shasta College, Questa College, Sonora High School and Somerville High School. And there were some, uh, local community organizations as well. The feedback has been very popular. Um, hopefully some of you got to attend. And, um, statements such as, I got simple strategies that can be readily implemented with powerful outcomes. And it was great seeing such a recognized speaker on our campus. Um, we love to show this place off. It's nice when you all get to come and join us. And so, um, we'd like to sincerely thank the TLC and would like to, TLC team would like to sincerely thank and everyone who was involved in, um, making that. Um, we're excited too with the TLC front that college council did approve, um, some funds for TLC. So we're excited to see that that's happening as well. I'd also like to invite you all to our CTE Occupational Olympics being hosted at Columbia College on Tuesday, April 23rd. The competition begins at 10 o'clock. We have automotive, cosmetology, culinary arts, emergency medical services, fire technology, natural resources, photography and welding. So if you have a chance to come by, come and check those out. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting. It's kind of cool to see that go on down in the kitchen as well with, with that, that part. Um, I, and the fire one is amazing as well. MJC and then the Columbia College Academic Senates have been collaborating on the district faculty hiring procedure. We'll have our second reading in two weeks. We're hoping that we can pass this, kind of figure it out, work together as a team to get this going. I want to give a special shout out to Giselle and Aisha for the Saturday morning meeting, Zoom meeting. That was a lot of fun. And then, uh, Catherine and Lucy for the Friday morning, um, Zoom meeting, but we all sat there and we got it worked out. And I'm hoping that Columbia College Academic Senate can, um, can, uh, get this passed. Curriculum committee updates, um, with this curriculum as it has to do with the academic senate, we're pushing through a, a lot of the curriculum. Um, a big thank you to Alyssa, our curriculum specialist, our wizard over there who pushes everything through and our curriculum chair, Alicia Kohlstad. So a lot of changes, a lot of, a lot of, um, implementation, especially, you know, if I can speak, you know, on my program, it's rolling along really nicely. Um, so thank you for all of that. I just want to wrap up. Um, you know, this is kind of why I, I get told, not get told, but I just got to, I wrap up on, on, on this note. Um, you know, I, like I said earlier, I like what I do. And it concerns me that we see students that have concerns and I know that it is, it is what it is. I know the legalities of it. But I'm here because of our students. I'm here because of our students and I know a lot of my colleagues are here because of that. We don't take this job lightly. We are putting people out in the real world. I think our students, where we owe that to our students. We owe better communication to our students. Dr. Richard, it scares me. Like it scares me that you said that you had not heard about this until today. That scares me. So thank you very much.
Team advisory council, Kelly Thomas? Is Kelly here? There she is.
Good evening, board members, President Richards and Henry. And Megan, there you are. Um, my name is Kelly Thomas and I'm the director of Columbia College Child Development Department. And I'm here to represent the Leadership Team Advisory Council, um, otherwise known as LTAC. And so, um, we'd like to announce that we do have a new LTAC officer. Um, I'm the recorder or secretary. And then, um, Dr. Jackie Forte is now the vice president. And I just would like to summarize a few highlights. We are in the early stages of planning. Um, Laura Mackey, as you know, is our president. And, um, she's doing some real neat things, just really trying to get everyone to collaborate and kind of piggyback off of what Jillian, the great things that Jillian Daly did. Um, Central Services has been actively involved in, um, preparations for year-end activities and some great upcoming construction, um, projects, modernization, um, involving the custodial services and grounds maintenance. And we would like to express our gratitude to them for all the dedication, um, that they give our both campuses. In February, there was a group of deans and directors and they participated in the Association of California Community College Administration. A lot of great takeaways there. Um, they expressed that they were excited to learn about direct assessment competency-based education and that they are looking forward to the, um, programs that are offered with that. And it's also a great opportunity for grant support for our CTE programs. And, and then what about our amazing athletic programs? Both campuses, woo! Um, so exciting. So Columbia College Basketball Team, um, they have been the conference co-champs, um, four out of seven years. So I'd like to give some shout-outs to some of the amazing student, um, players. We had Kai Jordan. He was the most valuable player. Rashad Bradley, freshman of the year. And that's exciting. Sounds like he's going places. Jonathan Dillon, first team, um, CBC and all, like on the defensive team. And then we have Ahmed Jeffries and, um, he was also on the, um, CBC, um, HM team. And then congratulations to all, um, and to Coach of the Year, Rob Hoyt and his instructional specialist, Sarah Mitchell, who keeps it all together. And then for MJC, I've got a lot more statistics for, uh, their athletic department. Um, so they have the NATY CAA Cup standings, which measures overall program success. And MJC is ranked fourteen out of a hundred and six California community colleges. So that's pretty exciting. Um, those programs have really grown. I know, um, just like culinary and my department too, child development. Um, after COVID, you know, that was some rough goes, but it's really great to see that coming back. Um, there's also some great statistics that we're surpassing, um, a lot of transfer students from the MJC Athletic Department and signings and scholarships. So that's something to definitely celebrate. And also I hear there's a Pirates, uh, Beer and Wine Fest, uh, fund, uh, fundraiser on April 13th. We hope to see you all there. It's from six to nine PM. And speaking of fundraiser, our own child development department, we just had our, um, tea party fundraiser. Thank you to, uh, the foundation who helped us start that six or seven years ago. Pam has a big role in that. And then of course Marcus, uh, built that fundraiser into his curriculum. And that supports our, um, future educators and student teachers in teaching permits, um, fingerprints, scholarships, and it also supports our child development club.
Thank you. About, about ready to wrap up?
Yeah, I am. Thank you for your time. It's great to see you guys and safe travels back home.
Any, any questions for Professor Thomas? Now we'll move on to the, um, Yosemite Faculty Association, Brian Green.
Good evening trustees, President Richards and Chancellor Young. As always, it is good to see everyone up at Columbia for this month's board meeting. I have another mixed report this evening. On the positive side, in the past couple of weeks, we have reached a tentative agreement on Article 13, Transfer and Reassignment Procedures. Once ratified, the new article will eliminate unnecessary paperwork and streamline the process. This is an improvement for faculty that reduces the administrative burden. We are also close to finalizing a reimbursement agreement for part-time faculty health benefits and have just a few remaining details to resolve before we can announce it and prepare for implementation. Finally, we've made recent progress towards an improved large lecture incentive and YFA is reviewing the district's latest proposal with an eye towards how we can make it work. All of these items are positive improvements and I appreciate the district's efforts to bring them to fruition. It also brings us that much closer to concluding this round as it leaves just a handful of items left to resolve. Unfortunately, progress on the few remaining items has seemingly stalled and I am now no longer optimistic that we can wrap up in the near future. I understand the state budget is a headwind and that we all may need to scale back our expectations for what we can accomplish in the current environment. The key here is that the structural changes to the contract that the district is seeking require commensurate investments for YFA's support. If we're scaling back, we need to scale back both the changes and the investments, not just the investments. More importantly, there appears to be a focus on non-instructional faculty in the district's workload and compensation proposals. YFA represents all faculty and recognizes the unique contributions instructional and non-instructional faculty alike bring to the colleges and critically our students. Throughout this round, we have consistently demonstrated our willingness to make common sense improvements to better align compensation and workload across the board. The totality of these changes must rightfully be considered so as not to unreasonably single out some faculty over others. YFA is committed to ensuring this is the case and will continue to bring this perspective to the table as we work through the remaining unresolved issues. Finally, I would like to thank trustee Richards for acknowledging the student comments from earlier this evening. And in, uh, ensure everyone that YFA and the district, uh, human resources department is working closely to ensure that the entire process for the faculty involved is being handled professionally and as expeditiously as possible. Thank you for those comments earlier. This concludes my report. Thank you and have a nice afternoon.
Any questions for President Green? Thank you. Now we move on to the classified senate activity reports. First for Modesto Junior College, Amanda Cannon.
Um, good evening, President Richards, fellow trustees and Chancellor Young. Um, it's so nice up here at Columbia College. I come up here maybe twice a year and it's just beautiful. So thank you for the invitation. Um, we're happy to report that our classified senate elections have closed. Um, we currently have multiple classified senate area representatives in places, uh, in place from student services, college administrative services, instruction, and also district services. In a short period of time, we've added classified senate representatives to more than 10 councils or committees and as well as multiple work groups around the institution. Um, Karen Campus wanted me to let you know that they are growing and they wanted to share that their one-year anniversary is coming up in May. They're in the process of planning the celebration. They are making progress toward generating a, a quality cross-departmental reference, referral process for students so that MJC- so that MJC Classified Professionals can provide warm handoffs to our students from area to area as their needs arise.
No, that can't be right. Ignore that, please.
And we wanted to publicly thank the Academic Senate for including Classified Professionals in their hiring document. What it shows is that they value inclusion and as Classified Professionals, we appreciate the seat at the table and we just wanted to make that very clear. Both Academic Senate and CSCA have been huge supporters in establishing MJC Classified Senate and we want to express our appreciation in that. Finally, I wanted to say that Classified Professionals had expressed a desire to have access to view these board meetings in real time and I'm so pleased to be able to report at our next Classified Senate meeting that they can log in from their home or wherever they're at with their families if they're outside their working hours. So I want to say thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Questions? Thank you. Now Columbia College Classified Senate, Sandra Smith? Not here, okay. Now one of my favorite parts, Student Senate Activity Reports. Associate Students of Modesto Junior College, Matthew Rodriguez. Not here? Still one of my favorite things. Associate Students for Columbia College and I hope to hear every, you tell us everybody that's here, Patrick Krebs, I'm sorry, Alexander Jukes. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Board Trustees. I'm here with my almost whole team. You guys want to get up and introduce yourselves?
Please.
That was mandatory.
Exactly. Thank you. Gracias. They get an extra minute because of interjections.
Hi, my name's Leandra. I'm technically, this is my first year at Columbia College and I am the Director of Activities here.
My name is Ashley Escalera and I have been here for a very long time, but I am the Vice President of the Associate Students of Columbia College.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tobias Harrison. I'm a forestry student for the past three years here at Columbia College and I am the ASCC Treasurer.
And the green Harris because you're a forestry? Okay, very good.
Hi, my name's Sam Parker and this is my second semester here. I am a Senator and I majored in Allied Health.
Thank you. So nice of y'all to join us tonight. Please continue with your report.
Thank you. So with midterms behind us and the end of the semester just over the horizon, we have kept ourselves busy and committed to our goals. As an essential part of our job duties, we have made attending the Columbia College Committees a priority as well as a fun part of our positions to keep the student voice heard and in these important conversations. Our clubs have continued to be active with various events around the campus. Our International Folklore Dance Club held a dancing event during our college's Multicultural Week. And this weekend, the Chess Club will also be having a campus-wide chess tournament where they will have multiple different levels so that all skill levels can participate. The ASCC is also in the process of planning our annual Spring Semester, Cram Night and Dona Stress Events. With the semester halfway through, the ASCC has also started the process of putting out our spring elections for the 2024-2025 ASCC Leadership. In addition to the elections, the ASCC has also heard of students that are anxiously awaiting to hear what the plans for student housing beyond the summer semester are going to look like as fall contracts are not yet available and prices are still unknown. Thank you all for your time and for being here tonight.
Any questions? Thank you. Now we'll turn it over to Chancellor Young. We'll hear from our Presidents and so others. Oh, CSC, I always miss somebody. I'm sorry. I'm an equal opportunity messer though, I'll tell you. Patrick Krebs?
Good evening, President Richards, Fellow Trustees and Chancellor Young. I hope you enjoyed your dinner here in Columbia's Cellar Bistro. It's well-known that Columbia not only has a beautiful campus, but has a delicious culinary arts and amazing hospitality management program. I'm glad you could enjoy it. Classified Professionals at this month's chapter meeting took nominations to be, to be delegates to the annual CSCA Conference. CSCA and the district have scheduled our first negotiation meeting and will begin in the next couple of weeks. We look forward to a productive and mutually beneficial negotiations over the coming months. During the last month, I had the opportunity to sit down with each of the Presidents of their respective colleges, one of which was today with President Tran. Each discussion was pleasant and I feel fruitful to continue building positive relationships between CSCA and the college administration. Fruitful relationships will mean better support and better environment for a positive learning environment for our students. I look forward to regular meetings with President Sanders and President Tran. Nod, so. I must say, there is a concern from CSCA leadership as well as many members about the plan that has been discussed at various levels of the shared governance and was announced during events this last month that the district will be ending the bus program in the very near future. There is also discussion of the possibility that the shuttles may also be ended. CSCA has concerns about the impact to the services to the students and the impact to Classified Staff. Even on this board agenda, there are contracts and purchase orders that seem to be indicating the plan may be moving forward. CSCA intends to negotiate the impact of these decisions and has conveyed that to the district administration. CSCA leadership has been disappointed with the communication from the district regards to these discussions and potential impacts of these decisions. CSCA leadership would like to point out that this lack of communication undermines the relationship goodwill between CSCA and district administration. We hope that there will be better communication from the district administration in the future. This concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Well, I will say that I was going to hold this for a future agenda. This came up before on the, on the motor pool. And I've received a lot of calls. And this board has been very clear to Vice Chancellor Stewart that no decision will be reached without careful consultation of everybody. I can tell you that as a former athletic director, I was involved with this decision with motor pools on four different campuses. And I can assure you, I'm only one vote, but I can assure you that I will do everything possible to make sure that, that everyone's involved in this process. And if a decision is made to go in a direction, departments won't pay more money. The process will be streamlined and you'll get buses and you'll get rental cars and do that. And I'll just tell you, for example, when I was at the University of Albany, we had, we had a whole motor pool. And I'm just going to try to figure out if it's right, but say $300,000 we spent on the motor pool. Well, we went and analyzed and found out the athletic department spent $100,000, the art department spent $10,000, whatever. My hope would be that we would make those people whole. We would come up with a charter bus companies that people could easily get. We would have a rental car program with like Enterprise or something like that. And that will be my goal. And in my conversations with Vice Chancellor Stewart, I think that's his goal. And I, and I'm sorry, you know, there's a lot of miscommunication and things that, that go on that shouldn't. And this is one. I've, I've had calls about this. I don't know where we are in the process. I will find out. But I'm going to have this agendized at the next meeting where we'll have a discussion on it. So thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions? Thank you. Chancellor Young, you're up. I already introduced you, so I don't have to do it again.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Richards. To begin, let me call on Dr. Tran from Columbia College to share with us the update from Columbia College.
Great. Thank you, Chancellor Young. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming to visit Columbia College today. We welcome all. And hopefully, as you are driving through campus, one of our beautification canvas, if you notice with the support of our foundation, we're able to put all the flags that as you come in into the light pole and the flags really reflect what we really want for Columbia College is for our student to dream, learn and achieve. And I think that kind of foundation structure for the college brings the community on, has goodwill and thank you so much, the foundation for supporting that along with the college. I'll keep it short, but we even took out an ad to thank our basketball team. So they did a really good job and I realized that the college is the heart of the community and the community is the heart of the college. And to see everybody at that final game, Charles sat next to me, I think his ear busted. I was a very active member in the audience, but we had such a great time. So like Charles said, we look forward to any way we can grow our athletic programs and support the athletic program much more than what we have been doing. And then my last item to answer our student, their housing concerns. So actually, we are meeting with the consultant firm tomorrow. Currently, right now, it is looking at the exchange of ownership, exchange of operations. So along with that, as any leasing contract, there's negotiation. And the symbol negotiates such as, well, you turn off the light and you pay the bill, who's going to come in and what day do you pay the bill? Just for example, so it can get as minute or it could be a big idea, but we promise you that we will work with the vendor so that it's seamless, so that the student can move in if it needs to be because the leases aren't due until August, but we are actively working on it. Believe it or not, every two weeks we have our meeting at 8:00 AM. The reason why we don't share every single step because it gets people nervous, but at the same time, Stan, if you don't get everything, you feel like, oh, what's going on? But our hope is that we stay on track when student can apply, when you come in, there would be minimal or none interruption. So, thank you so much.
So as the parent of a future Division One golfer, are you a person who sits at the game and yells at the referees? Or yeah, you do.
Yes.
Does anyone know security, has she ever had to been escorted out?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sanders?
Good evening, all. Kim, could you help me out with a little distribution project here? Because I've got some happy face squishy balls to, to spread out in relation to our, our first announcement here, the I, I would, I, I would normally, but I'm trying to behave, I'm trying to behave. Cal Getze, MJC is Cal Getze calibrated. So you heard President Flores talking about the AB 928 curriculum work that's coming along. This is a massive transformation in the curriculum of our institutions. And I wanted to share with you that MJC Curriculum Team is working closely with the Columbia Curriculum Team, which is working closely with our District IT Team in order to get us ahead of the curve for a fall 2025 implementation of this new plan. But of course, for fall 2025 catalog, that means that things have to be submitted by September of this upcoming year, fall 2024. So we are fast-tracking this project and this is I, I need to make a seat cushion out of some of these for Articulation Officer because she needs a lot of stress relief right now. She's doing really well. I want to share some great things that are happening at the college, a subset of what I shared in my written report to you. Ruth Lumen, ESL professor, has been named one of the outstanding women of Stanislas County for her work with Afghan refugee women, just stunning work that she's doing there. Shirley Miranda Brennis in our English Department is coordinating our Zero Textbook Cost Program and you heard the chef earlier talking about zero textbook cost. Our students so far have saved $8.4 million of textbooks that they didn't have to buy because their professors have committed to using these resources. Another way we're using resources differently is something we started here at Columbia College under Trevor and Melissa, myself, and pushing on, why do we make students buy Scantrons? And then they don't have a Scantron and then they're stressed out trying to buy a Scantron. Why don't we just give them the Standtron? Buy their Scantrons for them. Well, the new Fees Handbook just came out from the state of California and it's now encouraging colleges to do what now both colleges are doing in providing free Scantrons and Blue Books to our students as part of our instructional supplies. It's really straightforward and easy for us to do. The last several weekends, I've been at the college for all sorts of different events. History Day for competition across the Stanislas County. Then we had the Science Bowl. We had the Innovation Challenge and an Innovation Showcase, projects that Chad talked to you about last year in this seat. And we also had the Science Olympiad this last weekend and Chancellor Young and I were there passing out ribbons for probably an hour and a half. It was quite the adventure coming down the line. We didn't get to pass out ribbons to our Ag students because they were in Hawaii. Four of our Ag students in the poultry program went to Hawaii and competed, came back with about $10,000, $12,000 worth of scholarships between the group of them. On Wednesday of this last week, our team, including Mike Sunquist, who's here, and some of our Deans, went out to Patterson. We worked with Patterson Superintendent out there in adding a CNA class, Certified Nursing Assistant. We're working on a logistics pathway, English language courses for parents of students that are in the, in the elementary schools during school hours provided they're onsite. Child development, getting home health or home childcare folks trained up and licensed and working on an elementary education incumbent, people who live on the West Side, going through an elementary education program in order to become teachers and then stay in residence on the West Side. We had our ACCJC Forum on Monday of this week, so that was well-attended. It had a lot of good input from community members and college members. And then the upcoming on April 5th, if you read the first page of our Iser, it talks about the strength of program review at Modesto Junior College. And we have our program review party coming up for the next iteration of that on April 50th, 5th coming up.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge since the last meeting, we had a very successful African-American Education Conference at MJC that was very well-attended from the high schools. And this year, we had more students from the high school attending than last year. And it is our hope that we were able to impress upon the high school students that MJC is a place for them. And of course, we have service, services from the special programs to support them when they enroll. Next, I want to mention that the District Strategic Plan is rolling forward. There were two town halls that took place recently, one in Modesto and one in Sonora. Both events were very well-attended by members of the community. We are specifically reaching out to solicit participation from the greater community regarding our planning for the future. And the comments from the community have been very, very positive that we are reaching out and wanting to hear what they have to say. Finally, accreditation. Both colleges have had meetings with the Chair of the Visiting Team. And I will be meeting with the District Chair and also the Chair for Columbia College on the 25th. So I'm happy to report that it is moving forward and we do not anticipate any problems for either college. All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Questions for Chancellor? 5.5 is the travel report. That's for information only. Moving on to six, we're getting to the consent items. Is there any member of the public wishing to pull or speak about any consent items? Any Board members wishing to make any changes? With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We adopt consent items as listed 6.2 through 6.12. And then I have, before the vote, I have a comment.
Do you have, is there a retirement thing or this is?
There is, sir.
Would you like to do that now?
So, yes, all right.
I, I screwed that up last time, so I wanted to get that right this time.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda is Randy Mooreing, 17 years of service, maintenance specialist, painter, facilities, planning, maintenance and transportation, central services. So you know, when you, when I walk on the West Campus quite frequently or I drive by the East Campus and I see all the work that's been done to take those old buildings and beautify them and all the painting that's gone on in the last few years, it just adds a tremendous sparkle and shine to our buildings. And I have no doubt that Randy and his team had a lot of work involved in that. And I just want to thank him on behalf of myself and my fellow Board members in the community. And I wish him all the luck in his retirement. Thank you.
Before your motion, I'm reminded that there's a correction to item 6.11. Madam Stogner, would you?
Yes, on the Modesto Junior College Out of State Student Travel, there's a correction on the description of the item. interim director of Rise Up is Glenn Stovall, not Glenn Cadwell.
Nice. So, thank you very much.
And I'll, and I'll amend my motion to include that correction.
Thank you. We have motioned by trustee Garrett. Second? Please.
The comment is, you know, we, we food is concerned every month and there's the donations made to the district of the very top college of and they're very impressive every month. And this particular one we have from Dave Wilson, nursery, a worm casting which I had never heard.
Jenny knew about that. I asked about that. Jenny knew about that. I asked about that.
A hundred thousand dollars of value. And I just thought I would thank all of the donors this year, but in particular, whatever that is. And that's exactly what it says.
Let's have trustee Nekelow expand to find out. Since she almost went into the worm business.
For about a week, my husband and I considered this industry. And it, you can make a lot of money. The home gardening spaces is the biggest area. And so it's just a huge soil amendment, but it's also big in poultry feed. And you can also secrete a juice, which is very nutritious. And so I've talked to the Ag Department since seeing this on the agenda. They have big plans and I think this is an area that shows kind of some biodiversity and innovation that typically hasn't been within that, that particular area. Worms haven't been within the Ag Department. So basically, you're like drawing out the worm, like you're dead and it secretes it. Yeah. And so you take the dead worm and it's a soil amendment where you can secrete the juice, which is the soil amendment, or it can become a byproduct of animal feed for poultry.
And here I thought I was special as a youngster.
It's a big gift.
When I was a youngster, I had worms for fishing, you know, until the flies started coming in and my parents. And I assume you're seconding the motion. Second by trustee Davis. Please, a motion to approve. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Now we're going to move to the action items discussion. We have a board policy second reading.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you, Board President Richards, Chancellor Young and the rest of the trustees. We have before you 10 policies that are up for second reading and board approval. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the board approves all 10 policies as presented in the agenda. If there are any questions, I can answer them prior to the board's discussion and action on this item.
Do we need to take them individually or can we take them as a whole?
I think we can take them as a whole.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion that.
So moved.
Okay, 7.13. Okay, call the roll, please.
Or you can just.
That's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Okay, now we're now to the embarrassing thing, the CCT Board of Elections. I guess that's.
First rate.
First reading.
Item. Oh, another first reading. Okay, please.
Thank you, Board President Richards. Before you, trustees, are 14 policies which are up for first reading. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the board pool policies 6250, 7-8046 and 7-8056 and conduct the first reading on the remaining 11 policies as presented in the agenda. Policies 6250, 7-8046 and 7-8056 will be brought back for a first reading at the April 10th board meeting. If there are any questions, I can address those at this time.
Thank you. Okay, so item, let's see, 7.4? 7.3? Where is that? Oh, I got you. Gosh, hell, you can't be sticking them on the bottom like this. I mean, come on. Okay, 7.3, board update, board regular, trustees' regular meeting. We need anything, what are we doing with that?
Pull up a presentation.
Thank you. At this time, we'll play the Jeopardy music.
Well, the good news is, is we're going to review all 65 pages of the bond survey. So it takes a while to load. The report is pretty short, so maybe just let me blitz through it and then we'll see what questions the board has. Yes. Go ahead to the next one. So we did complete a bond feasibility survey that we had chaired and discussed with the board. There were 844 registered voters in the district that responded. I believe Dr. Sanders was one of those that happened to be plucked out of the registered voters and he responded. Doing a survey, they were evaluating different levels of funding, different projects that might sit well with the community. They presented both positive and negative messages to potential voters to see if negative would have an impact on changing their vote. And when they did their final ballot test, it was at an authorization of 584 million. And the results were, even after hearing some positive and negative messages, it turned out to be a 55.8% support, plus or minus 3.4%. So not bad, not overly promising and optimistic, but something that gives me hope for the future that if we were to go forward with a bond, that we have the possibility of passing. Please remember with a Prop 39 bond, you need to have a 55% voter threshold. Next slide. So we had a discussion in board finance, which is attached, which we won't go through, back in April 23. And we had a conversation of if we want to go for a November election, here's our timeline. And I'm at the point of telling you here that we're not ready to go for a November 24 election. And if we go to the next slide and if we need to jump back to the timeline, we could do that. What we are currently doing at both colleges is all of the planning. We just talked about the strategic plan. We are now going through our facility master plans for both colleges. So an architect firm that happens to be our current architect is guiding both colleges through their planning process. We also need to do an infrastructure survey to really know what our needs are as it relates to our old campuses. So we should be finalizing all these documents over the next several months and then coming back to the board and having a conversation. Again, are we willing to make that effort to go out for a bond at some future time? And so with that, Antonio, those are my three slides. Good.
They're not, they're not heavy at all. What was the timeline of the survey to registered voters? Are we talking weeks, months? Because I think it's important to put that in comparison with economic times as well.
It was mid-January and they are intentional. And I don't remember what thing that they were avoiding, but they're like, no, we need to do this before some event. And so they chose the last two weeks of January approximately.
What percent did the last bond pass with? Like landslide?
No.
In the 60%.
Yeah, it was like low 60s.
Okay.
Microphones, please.
And will the, will the handicap walkway ramp updates? Could those be included in a future bond?
Anytime we spend money on facilities, there is a required expenditure on ADA projects. So we will continually have to spend money on projects that benefit ADA, which could be ramps, which could be signage, which could be plenty of other things. So again, we already allocated dollars for, I believe, one or two or three ramps at MJ3 at MJC. So those are underway. But yes, as we, if we pass another bond sometime in the future, then yes, there'll be plenty of ADA work being completed.
Other questions?
When they do these surveys, do they give people an idea of how much they would actually be paying?
Correct, yes. And I believe that Chancellor Young might have shared the bond survey report with you. It might be something that we pull back to Board Finance Committee just to have a conversation to see if there are any questions from Board Finance before we start our next steps. But I, we interviewed several search firms. We're very pleased with the company who did it. And I think that the report that was presented to you actually is a readable document. Yes, it's way too many pages, but you can quickly go through the highlighted topics and make your way through to see kind of how they did it. I will just state that we've had conversations over the years of a fire training center here at Columbia, a CTE facility that might consolidate Ag down at MJC. Those polled well. And so some of the conversations we've had on the campuses have played well with the voters. Now, depending on how long it takes us to consider going out for a bond, we may have to do a survey again. If we do a bond next year, maybe we can save those dollars. I think we have to wait every two years. But we'll have other considerations. We'll have a facility master plan that, for each campus, that you will be reviewing. And so again, the community will also be involved with those like they were with the strategic plan. And so we hope to get all the input, including from the Board of Trustees as we develop these facility master plan.
Not including staff time. How much does it cost us to go after a bond?
Well, once we have officially determined that we're going for a bond, there is no cost for the taxpayer associated with our time. As employees, I would have to be doing that on my own work time, after hours. There is a period of time, like if you said, you know what, I want you to keep moving forward with the bond. Let's make November happen. We still have a period of time before you adopt a resolution where we can inform the public of factual items. These buildings are 60 years old. They leak, they have this problem and that problem. And most districts do that. They send out informational items. And each of those can run you $30,000 to $60,000 for those informational notices. So when we do decide at some point to go after a bond, it's not only a little bit of district dollars, it's also getting the foundations, getting the board members, getting the presidents and getting the campus communities involved in selling this to our neighbors that this is good for them and the community.
Well, as, I'll just be candid, I'm not someone that generally supports bonds. And I will bring up the fact that when I was on the Finance Committee, I had very specific concerns such as a fitness center and possibly the thing we want to do with CTE. So I think this needs a lot of work. So I'm really glad that you put it off. But as it stands right now, I couldn't support this.
Could not.
I could not support this. But there's a lot of time, there's a lot of consultation. But our campus needs a fitness center. And I think we have some great ideas that trustee Aguilar has brought up and those things need to be in there. We need to have things that the voters want. And also, I know the last bond issue, apparently some promises were made to Patterson that never happened. And I just want to make sure we don't get into that situation.
I would recommend that as the college presidents are doing their facilities master plan, that you are obviously Board of Trustees, but you're also the community. And so that we make the opportunity available to the community, which would include you to provide feedback as we're developing these documents.
Moving on, item 7.4. We have a motion, we have a proposal to increase the student health fee.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Garrett, second by trustee Nicolau. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The passes. Okay, moving on to 7.5. A special appointment to the VPA, VIP, JPA Board of Directors. I guess the recommendation is Catherine Pritchard, she's done this before. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Garrett? Oh, I'm going to give that to Nancy. She's over there. Trustee Hinton. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. 7.6, nomination for the State Board of Governors Classified Employee of the Year Award. Someone's going to take us through this? Or?
So, you can move forward with the recommended action and not name the individual. I'm still awaiting the responses from trustees.
Can I have a motion for that? Not trustee Garrett? That would be trustee Nicolau and the second will be trustee Davis. All in favor? All right. Okay, any opposed? No. Okay. Oh, he's getting opposed? Okay, good.
Yeah, right.
Okay, now we're up to 7.6. We just did that one. 7.7, CCT Board of Directors position. Would you handle this one, please?
Are you going to cry?
No, but I'm the one being nominated. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Nancy, second. Leslie, all in favor?
Aye.
My election flyers will be going out next week. Okay, we have a trustee resolution absence form for trustee Nicolau. Was that?
Mr. President, before, can we put it in the record or that trustee Nicolau has left the room as she previously stated and accusing herself from this action?
Thank you. That motion to approve? Second by trustee Davis, trustee Aguilar, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Okay, passes. Okay, 8.1, requests for future board agenda items, starting with trustee Garrett. Any?
No, I have nothing.
Trustee Bakes? Okay, trustee, Vice President Aguilar. Trustee Nicolau.
That cauliflower was delicious tonight. Thank you so much for hosting us, Columbia.
Trustee Davis. Trustee Hinton. I have one. I No, it's okay. It's okay. There's an issue that I brought up last year that, and I know there's probably politics, but I really wish we didn't have commencement at Columbia and MJC at the same time, on the same day, because I would like to go to both. So I would like campus presidents to try to work through the governance committee so that we could, we could, you know, have either a different day or a different time so that we could both go. Because it's really unfortunate that we have to split our time between the two because it's important.
Year or two. I would like to go to both, too.
And maybe they could rotate, like one gets Friday, the other one gets Saturday and the next year it reverses.
Okay, then the next Board of Trustees meeting will be on, yes, I missed something.
So earlier in the meeting, I can't recall who it was, mentioned motor pool.
I did.
Wanting an update. So would you like to add that?
As an agenda item, please. Are we ready for that, Trevor?
We're not quite ready for that. I would love to bring it to Board Finance. We are having some of those other conversations, so maybe as a future topic.
Okay, I just, you know, I've gotten several calls, people thinking this is a done deal. And I just want to make sure that this, you and I've had the conversation. It might be the right thing to do, but I just want to make sure people understand that it's not a done deal and there's going to be discussions and people will get input.
Since it's not agenda eyes, I won't respond, but thank you.
Okay. All right. Comments from the Board of Trustees? I excused you for doing it, Brad. Anyone else? Okay, we are going to resume closed session. But with that, motion, motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. We're adjourned. You're fine. Madam, Madam Sinographer, could you take the role, please?
Yes, you can. Thank you. Trustee Davis is here, Trustee Garrett's here, Trustee Nicolau, Trustee Aguilar, Vice President Aguilar, President Richards, Trustee Beggs. Forum is established.
Okay, we have no report.
We have no report out of closed session. Oh, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on April tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Open session will begin at three PM. Closed session will follow at three oh five. The board will reconvene to open session at five thirty PM in the Assembly Community College District Boardroom, two two oh one Blue Gum Avenue, Modesto, California.